Hi, good evening. Welcome to this evening's RTM meeting. Today is Monday, March 20th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We currently have 66 members of our 100-person, 100 sworn-in body here this evening. So I will now turn it over to your moderator, Seth Morton.
Before we do accept the agenda, there's a change to the agenda. I sent out an email on it earlier last week regarding the police false alarm fines being delayed. On review, these changes in the ordinance do not, and I'm saying "do not," conflict with any of the powers granted to the Police Commission by the Town Charter or the ordinances defining their responsibilities. This is an accounting thing that they're still working on. It's not ready. So without objection, I'll take item 2310 off the agenda. Is there any objection to doing that? Okay. Then, without objection, I'll accept the agenda as modified. Any objection? I hear none. So we'll go on to approval of the minutes of the March 6 meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
A second, please. Thank you. All set? Okay, all right. Just making sure we got that. Good. Any changes, additions, deletions, comments? Okay. Then, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? You can give them to Crystal later. The minutes stand approved unanimously. First item, therefore, on the agenda is 23-7, Amending the Planning and Zoning Regulations Land Use Application Fees. On behalf of Planning, Zoning, and Housing, Amy Zabatakas.
Amy Zabatakas, District 5, and Chair of the RTM Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee. I move Resolution 23-7, Consideration in Action to Authorize Increases in Land Use Application and Zoning Permit Fees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Without objection, I'll waive reading of the resolution. On March 9, the Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee held our regular meeting. We had 14 members of our 16-person committee present, representing a quorum. Jeremy Ginsburg, the Director of Land Use, was present during our meeting to provide an overview of the zoning department and building department budgets, as well as to review the proposed fee increases and answer any questions from our committee. The fees charged by the Town of Darien for zoning permits and land use applications were last adjusted in 2019. The proposal before the RTM today accomplishes two goals. One, to adjust the fees to better reflect the costs incurred by the town in connection with these applications, which have increased since 2019. And two, to wrap into a single fee certain items that had previously been charged separately. For example, the new fees will allow an applicant to pay upfront all the fees that will be incurred during the pendency of an application, rather than having to come back to Town Hall with additional checks for site visits, as well as shifting the burden of recording approvals to the town, rather than requiring an applicant to pick up the approval and take it downstairs to the town clerk to be recorded, which will make life a lot easier for a lot of people, believe me. At our committee's March 9 meeting, we reviewed the proposals with Mr. Ginsburg, and he was able to explain the rationale behind the proposed changes, which is discussed in detail in his memo of March 1, 2023, which you have all received a copy of. The committee agreed with the proposal and felt that these were reasonable increases to reflect the reality of the increases in expenses faced by the land use departments, and also to ease some of the administrative burdens. Our committee voted unanimously in favor of the proposal to increase the fees and recommends the same to the full RTM. Thank you.
On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, here he comes, Jack Davis.
I am Jack Davis, District 3, Chair of the RTM Finance and Budget Committee. Amy, thank you for your comprehensive report. Jeremy Ginsburg, Land Use Director, reviewed the process for determining these fees at the RTM PZNH meeting on Thursday, March 9. While I was at the meeting, other members of the F&amp;B Committee viewed the video of that meeting. Thank you, Channel 79. The proposed increase is based upon a full analysis of the cost of delivering these services. By the way, as an aside, I strongly recommend that the members of the RTM watch that RTM PZNH meeting led by Amy. Jeremy Ginsburg gives an outstanding description of the P&amp;Z and Building Departments, as well as those departments' relationship with the various land use boards and commissions, as well as the Tax Assessors and Public Works Department. This can be found on the Channel 79 Video Library. And I wrote this without knowing that Jeremy was going to be here. The RTM Finance and Budget Committee met and unanimously approved the new fees and recommends the same to the full RTM. Thank you.
Are there other committees of the RTM that wish to report? None? Remarks from town officials? None. Remarks from the RTM body? I see no hands. Electors of the town? Okay, looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please rise. Abstentions? Next item on the agenda is item 23-8, Increase in Appropriation for Darien High School Track and Jump Areas. Reporting on behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, Jack Davis.
I have a feeling this is going to be much shorter than our last meeting. I'm Jack Davis, District 3, Chair of the RTM Finance and Budget Meeting. I move Resolution 23-8, Approve an Increase in the Appropriation for the Darien High School Track and Jump Areas Project from $451,110 to $817,970 and amend the authorization relating to the issuance of bonds and notes to finance said appropriation to the amount of $817,970. Do I have a second? Louisa Bachmann. At the June 6, 2022 RTM meeting, the RTM approved Resolution 22-16, the appropriation and authorization of bonds and notes for the Darien High School Track and Jump Areas. The town wants to increase, and I understand it's the town because when we're doing bonds only, the town does that, and they had to approve that because all properties for the schools are owned by the town, not by the Board of Ed, wants to increase the appropriation and bond note authorization by $366,860 from $451,110 to $817,970. This increase is due to an increase in costs associated with the original quote to complete and new enhancements. The RTM Education Committee's report will get into much, much greater detail than I just did. The anticipated cost of the new bond note being authorized is approximately $57,000 annually, based upon a straight-line 20-year note. Now, my typical disclaimer for the Board of Finance, this amount may change as the Board of Finance has full discretion regarding the terms and conditions of said bonds and notes upon issuance. The RTM Finance and Budget Committee met and unanimously approved the $366,860 increase to the RTM Resolution 22-16, resulting in an amendment of the appropriation and authorization of bonds and notes totaling $817,970 and recommends the same to the full RTM. Thank you.
Is Ed Reschekka, are you here? Ah. No panic. Next, the Education Committee will report.
Good evening. I'm Liza Lucas from RTM District 6. I'm the Vice Chair of the RTM Education Committee. The Education Committee met in person on Monday, March 13, with 12 of 14 members present constituting a quorum. We discussed Resolution 23-8 to increase an appropriation for the Darien High School Track and Jump Areas. I will try not to repeat too much from what Mr. Davis just covered, and thank you for the clarity regarding the financing of this project. In the FY '23 Education Capital Budget, there was an approved project to replace the track and jump areas at Darien High School for about $450,000. This price was put together by the former Director of Facilities, based on estimates of costs at that time, approximately April of 2021. As Mr. Davis noted, the RTM voted to approve this project last summer on June 6, 2022. One of the major components of the new track project is the replacement of the underlying asphalt paving. The oil and paving industry has experienced cost increases over 40% since the original track budget estimate was provided. In addition, the track has deteriorated greatly since the original price estimate, which has increased the scope of work. Also, the administration and the board would like to upgrade the track's surface from a more basic polyurethane paved mat system to a polyurethane sandwich system. This upgrade in track's surface will increase the total cost of the project by $227,500. The upgraded sandwich track system includes a 15-millimeter impermeable surface that will significantly extend the overall life of the track. Some estimates are by at least five years, while also dramatically improving the force-reduction characteristics of the surface. This will help reduce rates at which athletes suffer stress-related injuries to the lower extremities, and also increasing the amount of time and intensity that athletes can train. Neighboring districts New Canaan, Norwalk, Wilton, and Greenwich have pursued tracks with this surface. The updates to the track will take approximately two months to complete. The administration and the board would like to approve the increased appropriation as soon as possible to lock in a June 2023 start date, set to begin after the Darien High School graduation, and to be completed before fall sports practice in late August. In addition, the administration and the board would prefer not to delay this project because the track will continue to deteriorate, adding cost to the project and risk to the district. If approved, this resolution will become effective 14 days after today's vote. The Education Committee voted unanimously in support of this Resolution 23-8 and recommends for the full RTM to do the same.
Are there any other committees that wish to report? Any town officials who wish to comment? Any comments from the RTM body? No. Electors of the town? Ready to vote? All those in favor, please rise. The results of 23-7, 69 in favor. No votes, no abstentions.
Mr. Warren, you just here.
Okay. No votes? Next item on the agenda is 23-9, Update Town Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Blight Prevention to Apply to All Residential and Commercial Properties. Reporting on behalf of PZNH, Amy Zabatakas.
Starting to feel like Jack Davis. All right. Sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm Amy Zabatakas, District 5, Chair of the RTM Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee. I move Resolution 23-9 to amend Chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for said ordinance to apply to commercial properties. Do I have a second?
Yes, a second.
Thank you. Without objection, I'll waive reading of the resolution. On February 23, the Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee held a meeting via Zoom where George Riley, Chair of the Blight Review Board, gave the committee an overview of the Blight Review Board's process. And at that time, we also discussed the Board's interest in expanding their authority to cover commercial properties. 12 of our then-15-person committee were present, representing a quorum. Then, on March 9, at our regularly scheduled Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee meeting, we had 14 members of our now-16-person committee present, representing a quorum. At that meeting, we had the proposed revisions in front of us, and Mr. Kemp from TG S&amp;A was present to review the specific amendments with us. In addition, prior to that meeting on March 9, I had spoken with our town attorney, Wayne Fox, who confirmed that there was case law authorizing the expansion of the town ordinance to include commercial properties, and I reported that position to the committee. And I understand that Attorney Fox will speak to the RTM on that point as well. Our existing blight prevention ordinance was approved by the RTM on October 25, 2016. Based on the overview that we received from Mr. Riley in February, the committee felt that this board is operating as it should, with fines being levied only in most egregious cases. Many of the blight issues are resolved by the blight profession officer with the support of the Human Services Director. And I think for anyone who is interested, not to keep touting my committee's meetings, but that February 23 meeting is a very good overview by Mr. Riley about really everything that the Blight Review Board does. Initial concerns from residents concerning potentially blighted properties are rooted initially to the blight prevention officer, who is a town employee. These concerns currently do include both commercial and commercial properties, but residents have to be told that commercial properties are not within the authority of the board. So there has been a request, and this has come from residents, to expand the authority of the Blight Review Board to include commercial properties. At the committee's March 9 meeting, we reviewed the proposed checks change with Mr. Kemp in detail, and a number of the members of the committee felt that while supportive of expanding the ordinance to include commercial properties, they were concerned that the fines levied on commercial properties were not higher than those being imposed on residential properties. Ultimately, our committee determined that since the Blight Review Board was not at this time recommending a different fine structure for commercial properties, we would not seek to have it included in the amendment. However, our vote in favor of the amendments to the ordinance did include a request that I recommend to the Blight Review Board that they do consider giving consideration to raising the fee structure for commercial properties, once they've had some time to see how the ordinance is going to be applied to commercial properties. Therefore, the Planning, Zoning, and Housing Committee is in support of the amendments as written and recommends the approval of the same by the full RTM. Thank you. I think so.
As part of the report, PZNH has asked the Town Council just to address some of the technical aspects of this. I'll recognize Wayne Fox, Town Council.
As always, nice to see you all. Amy and I had discussed this issue. The basic question is whether or not it can be applied to commercial properties, because it is not, in the view of some, clear as to whether it would apply to both commercial and residential properties. I will tell you, I have searched the case law on that. There's not a lot of case law that could be found. There is one case in particular known as Porcello versus Santinella, which is a lower court decision, in which the court said on the secondary issue, "An ordinance may impose stricter standards, or a municipality may act in a more comprehensive manner than those expressly authorized under 7-148, which is a statute that authorizes this concept." The court also noted that nothing in the statutes prohibit the regulation of blight on commercial properties either, and instead found that it is apparent that the legislature purposely used broad and general terms in the statute to allow municipalities to address safety, health, and general welfare. So clearly, under that case law, which is still good law as of this afternoon at least, one has the ability to do that. In my research, it also became apparent that other towns are also interpreting the statute in the same manner. Middletown, Fairfield, Hartford, Bridgeport, Norwalk allow for that. City of Stanford even goes further in its blight ordinance, not only stating that blight violations can be subject to enforcement against all real property, but also defining housing blight as existence of a blighted property, whether residential or commercial. So my opinion for you is that if you wish to do this and adopt the statute as proposed, it is doable and would be supported by a court in this jurisdiction. Thank you.
Now, on behalf of TG S&amp;A, Frank Kemp.
My name is Frank Kemp, Chairman of the Town Government Structural Administration Committee, TG S&amp;I. I'd like to report on the TG S&amp;A Committee's review of item 23-9 regarding the update of the Town Code of Ordinances, Chapter 12, Blight Prevention to Apply to All Residential and Commercial Properties. The TG S&amp;I Committee reviewed this request at their meeting of March 14, with eight of 11 members present. The committee discussed the proposal at hand and noted a memo prepared by George Riley, Chair of the Blight Prevention Board, that supported this resolution. A copy of George Riley's memo is included in the package of background material for this meeting, beginning on page 13 of 23. Mr. Riley has agreed to attend this evening's meeting, prepared to answer any questions we might have. The committee voted unanimously, by all present, to approve the resolution and recommend that our colleagues on the RTM act favorably on this proposal. Spectacularly committed Frank Kemp, Chair of TG S&amp;I.
Reporting on behalf of Public Health and Safety, Mac Patrick.
I'm Mac Patrick, Member of District 5 and Chair of Public Health and Safety. Our committee met virtually on March 15, 2023, with 11 of 15 members present, to discuss and vote on updating the Town Code on Blight Committee Responsibilities to Include Commercial Property. Guest Frank Kemp, Chair of TG S&amp;A, attended the meeting and gave the background details. He noted the existing private property blight prevention ordinance was used, with merely adding the words "commercial" and "entity" five times collectively in the document. The committee discussed the safety aspects of various blight commercial properties, such as potential trash accumulation, states of disrepair, and overgrown vegetation. It was noted the fines associated are both the same for private and commercial property. The Public Health and Safety Committee voted unanimously to include commercial property in existing blight prevention ordinance and asked the full RTM do the same. Thank you.
Any other committees wish to report out? Okay. Town officials, any comments? RTM body, comments? Yes, Clara.
Hi, I'm Clara Sartori, RTM District 2. I wonder if the ordinance, both the commercial and the residential, would include situations in which construction is going on and has taken much longer than anybody expected, leaving like a lot of debris around and that sort of thing? Is that considered blight, I guess?
I'll recognize Town Council. Unless, George, you want to? George Riley, Chair of the Blight Commission. Don't want to leave anybody out.
My old Board of Ed friend. Good evening, everyone. I am George Riley, Chair of the Blight Review Board. I believe the simple answer to that question is that when a project is under construction, actively under construction, then we would not be looking at it in terms of blight. We recognize that debris does accumulate, that supplies may not be apparent as orderly as we might wish, but that happens in construction. We certainly hope that it is not a prolonged process, but that really is up to the Building Department to make sure that the project is following the specs approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Okay. Electors of the town? Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please rise. The results of 23-8 are 68 in favor, three abstentions, no opposed. Everybody stay till we get the count, please. No votes, please? And abstentions? And abstentions? Okay, item 23-9 passes, 69 in favor. No, no votes, two abstentions. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
A vote.
Ah, thank you. A second? All in favor, please rise.